Good evening. This regular meeting of November 11th, 2024 of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to deliver world-class learners and to develop world-class learners, citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Bradley?
Here.
Hamel?
Here.
Jacobitz Kazire?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Sancy?
Whitman?
Here. We're very excited to welcome students from Sageville Elementary School to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Here they come.
My name is Sarah Nodeman and I'm from 3rd grade.
My name is Natalie Nodeman and I'm from 4th grade.
My name is Sophia Leck and I'm from 3rd grade.
My name is Rachel Lattman and I'm in 5th grade.
My name is Brynlee Thomas and I'm in 2nd grade.
My name's Brody Thomas and I'm in 5th grade.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you, Sageville students.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Not that one yet. There's one before that. One page forward.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 14th, the special meeting of October 28th, and the special meeting of October 30th, 2024, as submitted.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 14th, the special meeting of October 28th, and the special meeting of October 30th, 2024, as submitted. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, that brings us to a few board salutes. Could we start with you, Mr. Hamel?
Yes. Thank you to our partners at the Foundation for Dubuque Public Schools and the many area dining establishments that participated in this year's Dine Out for Public Schools. On October 30, 25 local dining establishments donated a portion of the proceeds back to the foundation to support the work of the district. It is a small but powerful display of the widespread community support for the Dubuque Community School District. Thanks for the many organizations who participate in this creative event, and thanks to everyone who dined out for public schools.
Thank you.
I have a board salute for alumnus Kyle Conrady, who returned to his alma mater, Carver Elementary School, to surprise the students with a football that was signed by the entire Iowa State football team. So Kyle is the kicker at Iowa State, a previous student at Carver, Roosevelt, and Dubuque Senior. This visit came about as the students were congratulating Kyle via social media. He got very excited about this and decided to get the football ready with his teammates and personally delivered it to the students. This is a great example of working together with an alumni, and Kyle is an excellent role model for our current students.
And we forgive him, I guess, if you're a Hawkeye fan for that. Very excellent kick.
Good job, Kyle.
I have a board salute for the cross-country teams that went to state. This was not last week, but the week before. So a board salute goes to our cross-country student athletes for an outstanding showing at the recent state meet in Fort Dodge, Iowa. Dubuque Senior High School girls' cross-country team finished 3rd place. They got to go on the balcony. For a second or third gets to go on the balcony, so they're always excited when the whole team gets to go on. And then individuals, the top 15 men and women of these races. So senior girls were 3rd. For Dubuque Senior, the girls' team was Claire Hoyer earned the medalist honor with a 9th place finish, along with junior Emma Chesterman took 10th. Then congratulations to seniors. Other state runners were Emily Gordon, Lisa Hoy, Briel Beschen, Nava Kessler, and Stella Weber. So that was the varsity team for the senior girls that won 3rd place. The Hempstead girls' team finished 10th place at the state, and the team was led by Evy Henneberry, who earned medalist honors in 5th place. So she got to go on the balcony and get a medal. Also, congratulations to Hempstead's other state runners Maggie Henneberry, Paige Pitts, Maylee Lang, Natalie Lyson, Chelsea Hyburger, and Gracie Driscoll. On the boys' side, congratulations goes to state runners Micah Fern from Hempstead, Jacob Hogg, and Dani Roethert from Dubuque Senior. And we are proud of all these athletes that represented Dubuque Senior and Dubuque Hempstead at state.
Awesome. Thank you. And we have a presentation from our superintendent.
Each year in our school district, at the end of the school year in May, we go through a process to pick our Teacher of the Year. And so each year, everybody within the district, parents, families, coworkers, administrators, all have the opportunity to nominate someone for Teacher of the Year. And they write, do a nice write-up, and then there's a committee of folks that go through that and then narrow it down to the finalists, and then there's a vote for our Teacher of the Year. And this year, I was really proud to announce that Jeremy Hoffman was our Teacher of the Year. So Jeremy, do you want to come on up here to receive your thing? Let's clap for him. So Jeremy's been, he's been a teacher in the district since 2001. He has been, he's a teacher currently at Kennedy Elementary School, 3rd graders. And the things that they say most about him is that the kids love him, he's got great relationships, he's kind, he's caring, and he listens to his students. So Jeremy, we really appreciate everything you do for the students at Kennedy and also for our district. So congratulations, we're proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd ask for you to hang up in that room of yours.
There you go.
No one will ever forget that you were Teacher of the Year. Yeah, yeah. The microphone's yours.
Just, you know, you mentioned appreciation there, and ever since I've received this honor, and that's what it truly has been, it's just such an honor, I've felt nothing but appreciation from former students and my current students at the time, and staff members, family members, and everything like that. So it's just been amazing, and you know, the appreciation really makes a difference. And I hope that it inspires me to keep on showing my appreciation for all the people that have supported me, to help me to be where I'm at and do what I'm doing. And I really have had so much support, it's amazing when you reflect on it, you think about just the huge network of people that are all working together to try to help every individual kid that we have in this district. And I've thought about that a lot, and I'm really just in awe of it, and I want to continue to just give shouts out to them and to all of you for what you do. And thank you to everybody who's supporting education. And I know everybody is here tonight for that reason, because you care about it. And so anyway, this really goes out to everybody who's doing their part to kind of help with that. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Dr. Parks, could I just add one thank you and congratulations? Friday night I had the privilege, I saw Dr. Kazire there to attend the Dubuque Senior High School's theater production of Dirty Rotten Scoundrels. It was outstanding. I know that Aaron Dean would say it is not just him, that it's a whole lot of other people on his team, and that is true, I'm sure. But the quality of work that comes through that department is extraordinary. So it was delightful, and I hope they all had a great weekend.
Riley Beck did a really, really good job. It was funny.
Thank you. I move the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So we're going to start our visitors' forum with a report from Eric Johnson, the principal at Sageville Elementary School, to hear what's going well at Sageville.
No. All right. Start your timers for my one, no. Good evening, and thank you for inviting me to share what's going well at Sageville. Obviously, we have a great family impact here, and so to start, thank you for our families that came and did the pledge, and the one family that stayed. Just for this. So along with the theme of families, we just wrapped up our fall conferences. We had 99% attendance, so we're excited with that. We just did one tonight, so we're now at 99.3.
Okay.
We have two students left. I'm hoping we get two so we can get to that 100%. So we're excited with that. Obviously, we value our families coming after, you know, the first two, two and a half months to talk and share about their students' growth and the impact, and for our teachers to set goals for the rest of the year. So attending that is huge for us. Our families take pride in that 99%. We've shared that out a few times in our newsletters, and we'll get to that 100% sometime. Also up on the horizon is our Sassy Stampede. So our parent-teacher club puts on the Fall Fundraiser every year. We have a mascot at Sageville, even though we're the Storm. We've got some nice open fields behind us that a Sasquatch lives in. We have Sassy the Sasquatch that comes and helps fundraisers and with other events around school. So this year, Sassy's bringing an obstacle course to the walkathon, not just the regular walkathon. So we're excited for that on November 22nd. If you feel like coming out and exercising with the kids, come on by. And at the end, somebody's getting silly strings, so if you want in on that, please volunteer and let me know, so I'm not the only one there. But with that too, there's also ice cream and pizza parties, because we want to, you know, boost that fundraising total. So food gets everybody motivated, right? Throughout the week, our students enjoy dress-up days each day to build spirit, and this year we've partnered with the community too. We're also, on Thursday night, November 21st, having Texas Roadhouse sponsoring Sageville Night. So if you feel like dining out again, part of the proceeds on the Thursday night will go to the Sassy Stampede in Sageville from Texas Roadhouse. So beyond the fun and fundraising, we also have our report cards coming up. So again, another chance to connect with parents and that value of the students' growth and, you know, performance so far. So our teachers are working hard on getting those report card comments in and done and grades entered for students, so that's an exciting part as we build that momentum and head towards winter break. You know, kids love getting their report cards, even though it's electronically now, they still come in and want to show off, I think. So they're excited for that too. So as always, thank you for your support. We appreciate everything you do as the Board and Directors for the district, and there's a lot going well. Feel free to stop out and visit whenever you'd like.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
If anyone else would like to address the Board, you're welcome to come to the podium and do so at this time. We ask that you state your full name, your connection to the district, and that you limit your remarks to three minutes. Please be aware that the Board can't respond to anything that you say, but we're open to listening to what you have to share with us. Eric, want you more? We didn't even time you.
I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Is there anything a board member wishes to pull? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, so that brings us to the Facilities and Support Services Committee report from Ms. Whitman.
All right. As you know, we meet, our Facilities and Support Services meets every, the first Monday of the month. Our last meeting was November 4th. They're at 4 o'clock here at the forum. The public is welcome to come and listen to these meetings. This is where you hear a lot of conversation between us and the presenters, the district people that come and talk about all these wonderful things that are going on in the schools. So I'll give you a highlight of what happened on November 4th. We had an update on district projects. Senior high school renovation Phase 2. There was an increase of 3,300 for the west parking lot over excavation, and the final, and that was the last thing to be done. The final inspection was on Friday, November 1st, for the project. Rob Powers shared that senior high school renovation Phase 2 plaque, which is beautiful plaque that we saw, was here, that will be hung in the auditorium entrance at Dubuque Senior High School. The plaque was donated by Straka Johnson Architects. So if you'd like to see that plaque, you're welcome to go into the auditorium entrance at Dubuque Senior and see that final. So we're very proud that Phase 2 is finished and Senior is all done for now. Same goes for Sageville Elementary School solar project. The rebate paperwork has been submitted with Aid Bailey, and the rebate of $137,856 will be reimbursed by January of 2025, and this is on the solar project. Preschool renovation project, that's at Seedlings out on the west end. Reviewed certificate of substantial completion with Sheetz Construction. Rob Powers shared with the plaque, there was a plaque presented for Seedlings, and will be hung in the Seedlings preschool, I believe in the entrance somewhere there. The plaque was donated by Straka Johnson and Mark Sheetz Construction, so you're welcome to stop by there and see the plaque. Eisenhower School Gymnasium addition project, the design phase continues. It's probably 60 to 70% complete. The project goes out to bid in December. Project is to start in the spring of 2025. With the front entrance and the kitchen area with completion of those areas in 2025, the gym addition will be completed in the fall of 2026. Irving Mechanical Remodel Project. There's been a little change in that project. Right now, the school has geothermal, and with the issues that they've been having with the underground mines, they're no longer to continue the new project for the new geothermal. So we will continue with the geothermal that's there, and then any updates will be rooftop units. We're not able to go underground any longer. Transportation siding replacement. Steel has arrived and are now in the process of taking old sheet down and putting up new. The project should be completed the next six to eight weeks, depending on the weather, and making sure that all the materials and everything is here on time. Security upgrades project. Mike Sais updated the committee. The federal safety and security grant, which provides $50,000 per building in the district for safety enhancements. The design phase will take place now, and the contracts to obligate the dollars due at the end of December. Upgrades will take place in January through June of 2025. And this project is contracted out, but our district will oversee the project, make sure everything is done up to what it's supposed to be and that we're on top of how these things are going to happen. But it's a grant of $50,000 to each building, so it's not costing the district anything for these security upgrades. Roosevelt School Loop Reservicing Project. There's an area on the busing in Roosevelt. It's not the whole school loop. They're going, working with WHKS and Company for design and bid and construction phase for the existing bus loop and pedestrian trail on the north side of the Eisenhower Middle School. So that's just getting started. Synergistics gave us an energy update, and since 2019, 5,242 building energy audits have been performed. Energy use has been decreased by 30.1% since the beginning of this program, a total savings of $2,636,500. And we are so proud that we got into this synergistics. It's helping us be, you know, energy efficient and in every way. So we've learned a lot, our employees have learned a lot, and things are, as you can tell, the dollar savings is significant. Kevin Kelleher gave us an update on Pebble and Save project recaps and financial targets for fiscal year 2324. The target indicated an unspent balance of $14,988,000, which was a decrease over the last year. The cash balance showed a decrease, but a solvency ratio of 16.2%, which is within the solvency target ratio. So we're good. Projections for fiscal year 2425. The targets indicate an unspent balance of $14,338,500, which is a decrease over the last year. Cash balance shows a decrease in solvency ratio at 12.4%, which is still within the solvency ratio. So we're good. And next meeting is December 2nd at 4 o'clock here at the forum. And I have one motion. Thank you. I move the Board of Education approve Change Order 16 to Tricon Construction Company on the senior high school renovation Phase 2 project in the increased amount of $3,303.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Change Order Number 16 to Tricon Construction Company on the senior high school renovation Phase 2 project in the increased amount of $3,303. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. I don't remember ever having only one.
I know. That's.
For the facilities meeting.
And a low dollar amount.
And a low dollar amount. I know. This is like breaking history right here. All right, well, thank you for that report, Ms. Whitman. That takes us to the Educational Programs and Policy Committee report from Ms. Jones.
Thank you. So similarly to the facilities program, we meet every Wednesday, the first full week of every month, and that too is where most of the education to us takes place and where we converse on what's going on in our schools. So we first heard from the Champions before an after-school program that runs at seven of our elementary schools in our district. That is our wraparound carousel. It starts at 6:30 a.m. and goes all the way till 6:00 p.m. after school. The program is currently serving over 200 of our children in our district. However, they are looking to expand their services to other elementary schools and are also offering scholarships to make it more affordable for all of our families. I guess I was surprised to learn from them that they're also offering full daycare programs on non-school days, so I think a lot of parents could take, participate in that, including But we feel very fortunate to be able to partner with the Champions program and look forward to moving that along. And then secondly, we heard from Superintendent Amy Hawkins, who updated us on the Iowa statewide assessment of student progress proficiency, also called ISASP, and the outcomes in the district and how they compare to the UEN, which is the Urban Education Network Schools in Iowa. Superintendent Hawkins just stated how important it is to compare our results with schools that have the similar makeup as we do throughout Iowa, both demographically and in population. We also heard from, let's see, Lisa Feltes, our Executive Director of Elementary, and Mark Burns, who's Executive Director of Secondary Education, who both feel that where our scores were is in the UEN comparison, that we are doing a great job and are already looking at how we can improve those test scores moving forward and how to help our kids. Otherwise, we just reviewed several policies, and I think that's about it from the programs.
Next meeting's December 4th?
Fourth.
At 4 o'clock?
Right here.
Right here, in this room. Come on by. All right, thank you, Ms. Jones. Are there any other board member or administrative issues?
One thing that I would just like to mention is Wednesday night, we have the privilege of having a well-known author and speaker, Catherine Price, and she is going to be speaking at the senior high cafeteria at 6:30 p.m. on Wednesday, and her theme is scroll less, live more. So really to talk about our cell phones and how it's really important that even as adults and as children, we get out, we're moving, and we're doing less on our phones and more with families, friends, and out in our community. So I'm really excited to hear her presentation. We are getting to have a mini little presentation or conference with her as district leadership at 4:15, and then she'll speak to the community at 6:30. So please, spread the word. We want to try to get as many people there as possible so we can hear all the good things she has to share with our community.
Anything else?
I was just going to add, for the sake of the community's knowing, in case the community wonders, what does the school board do? We had a pretty busy last couple of weeks. In addition to the regular board meeting, it was our quarterly additional board meeting where Superintendent and her team brings us information about the teaching and learning programs in the district. I don't remember, was it, was it available for people to view online? Is it?
The strategic plan update?
No.
No, the strategic plan. It is.
I would encourage anybody who hasn't viewed it to go in and spend a few minutes, a little bit of time to see the kinds of information that was shared with the Board in terms of the update on the strategic priorities of the strategic plan and the kinds of teaching and learning programs that are at work in our district that we're very proud of. And so if you want to know more about that, that's a place to go to hear some more about it. We also had a, we call it DCILT, District School Improvement Leadership Team meeting this past month, where Superintendent and her team bring information about the district, about the teaching and learning programs, and call for input from the parents, communities, students, and staff members who are a part of that group. And it really, if you say, where does that go? It goes to what will our priorities be for improvement in the district going forward. It's a very important structure and fun to be a part of that. And then lastly, we had both of, as you've heard from our reporters, we had both board committee meetings. So all in all, it was a past month of great learning and great celebration. So I just mentioned that to say, what do those school board members do?
And some of us are going to the Iowa School Board Association Convention in next week. Is that true?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. God, thank God. It's coming up in Des Moines, so, you know, continuing our board learning, and we bring that information. It is next week.
It is.
It's the 20th.
Yeah.
That's next week, everyone.
Okay.
Calendar. But it continues our learning as a board, and we share that back with those who aren't able to attend. So we are a learning board, which I think is a really good quality about us.
It is.
I think it's important to note too that we did have a board retreat at the end of the month, and those are great times for us to get to know each other better as far as a team and a unit, and then also for us to extend our learning. And so we had a guest from IASBO, Iowa Association of School Boards. Tammy Drawball came in and led us through some different activities and some different discussions, which really helps us grow as a board. So I appreciate, because some of you had to take off work to attend that, but I really do appreciate the time that we had together. Um, but I really do appreciate the time that we had together, and it helps us get to know each other and how we support each other as a board and support our kids in the schools. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.